Good evening, everybody. I'm our appointment Chair of the Shastbury Select Board and would like to call this meeting of the Shastbury Select Board to order on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023 at 6:32. First order of business, does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
No.
Next, we don't have any minutes for this one. So we'll go on to warrants. We have two warrants. The first one is for a brand-new plow truck for $178,45. Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Mike. Any discussion?
And just so you know, that's all out of reserve funds. That's not a loan or anything.
The other one is this.
This was out of one of the reserve funds, the Siki Fund.
We've done a fantastic job of doing this, we don't have to borrow money from this. Okay? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry five zero zero. Move by Martha, second by Mike. Items $1,000 or more. Eighteen K Agribusinesses are $3,031. Affleck, $1,015. Huzek LLC, I must be for some.
It's truck repairs.
Truck repairs, okay. Oh, that's right, that's the.
Formerly Delores.
Delores, okay. $7,994. Bennington County Sheriff's, $29.75. Another one for Sheriff's, $23.45. Dufresne's Group, $10,200.
That's part of the Water Main Project. It's gonna come back in grants and loans.
Cross Wells and Fox, because we had a couple someplace. $5,242. Uh, J. Go Fuel, $1,589. Matt Morris Excavating, this is finishes up the.
That finishes the Howard Park Drainage Project.
Morris Repair, $1,049. Crainer Pepper.
Eggleston.
Angelson and Crane, is that what it sounds like, a lawyer?
Yep. Yeah, that was needed to, uh, that was also for the Vermont Bond Bank.
Signal Landscaping, $26.25. Wilford Crestown, $2,375. Oil Cell Distributors, $3,600. OMA Daily, $36.96. And OMA Daily again, $3,056. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry five zero zero. Anybody have any announcements?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to thank all the members of the public for filling out the Economic Development Committee survey on Town Green Thoughts and Community Center. We're working on putting it all together and I believe we'll be discussing some of the recommendations at our next meeting at the Select Board, um, once we kind of have put it all together and synthesized the document. But we got some really great responses, so I appreciate that.
A good percentage?
Yeah, I think it was a good.
Any other announcements? Dave, do you have anything?
Nope.
Public comments?
That's me.
That you? Is there anybody on Zoom also?
No. Well, Rob's here.
Okay. Yes. Yes. Would you come? So the mic take you out, please.
So grimy. It's a grimy day. So speeding.
Okay.
Um, between Church Street, Cleveland Avenue, and you know where I live, right there next to Kenny, the speeding is out of control. I have called Pike numerous times and spoke with a gentleman there. He's been very receptive. When I do call, they kind of slow it down. Actually, the men wave to me now because they know I'm the one complaining, okay?
Excuse me, but is this trucks or cars?
Um, I'll tell you, a majority of them are trucks. Um, the cars, yeah. The, um, lighted traffic, the 25 slowdown, that has been broke since 4th of July weekend. And if you look at it closely, someone smashed it through, it shattered.
We're waiting on parts.
I have called Department of Transportation.
Yeah, we, we own it and.
Oh, we do.
We're waiting on parts.
Oh, that's why the.
Yeah, Hathaway came up and looked at it.
That's why the lady didn't know what I was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, we own that one.
Because I've called Pike, I've called the State Police Department, um, I've called the Sheriff Department. The speeding is, it's seriously out of control. Sit in my driveway and watch. If one of those big, and I know it's illegal to back out of your driveway in the state of Vermont, if any of our elderly people are backing out of our driveway, someone is gonna get killed. They will never stop. Our children are in school. I called the Sheriff's Department a couple of days before school started and said, you know, school's starting, can we get some kind of coverage up here or something? Because it's, it's like a speedway. As a matter of fact, I was at my mom's house on Cleveland Avenue, um, Friday, got there at 10:30. Andrea Madison is wailing on the door. Billy got killed. He got hit by a car. We all love Billy. Billy's a cat. Okay. Everybody in the neighborhood loves Billy. He chases butterflies, he's so much fun. And in 15 minutes, not a squealing brake, not a stopping car, nothing. Nothing. And they whip up Cleveland Avenue like it's no tomorrow. And before, there weren't little kids on the avenue. Now there's a whole new bunch of little kids. It's like a regrowth on Cleveland Avenue and, um, but, you know, I'm out working in my yard and these truckers are going by. Matter of fact, the guy who lost his load had just gone by my house. Just gone by my house. That's a prime example of something that could happen in the town. You know, something either speed bumps on Cleveland Avenue, which I think really needs to be done, um, because they're using Cleveland Avenue as a cutoff to, um, I still call it Main Street, you know?
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay?
So are Pike's trucks going down Cleveland Avenue?
No.
No, just.
No.
They're just on.
Yeah. But, you know, Pike's truck goes anywhere from those orange cement trucks, which Henry Cross waves to me because he knows I'm bitching about it. And, um, but there's a whole Hewitt, I mean, he's kit, um, uh, there, there's a whole slew of them that come out of Daleys.
Yeah, they have to, they have trucks.
Yeah.
And, I mean, there's a bunch of them.
And it's crazy.
We have a contract with the sheriffs and you can ask him to spend a lot more time.
Yeah, I've seen the troopers out there lately, so let me look into it. I'll.
The troopers haven't been out there up by me.
Yeah, they're usually down more towards this end of the block.
You know.
But I'll poke Hathaway again too and see what's going on.
Because it's, it's nuts.
Yeah, that sign is difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, but Cleveland Avenue, um, you know, the, you know, a bus, and I, I don't understand that a bus stops at the end of Cleveland Avenue in 7A, then it stops again at the trailer park. You know, it's, it's, I, I don't understand the bus routes because I don't have kids. But, you know, these big trucks, wailing as fast, they're not gonna stop. And, um, you know, I've talked with Gail Moran, Peter unfortunately couldn't be here because, you know, he had to.
He couldn't be here?
So he's a little busy. Um, but, um, you know, it's, uh, it's just crazy, you know, just Cleveland Avenue itself. You know, speed bumps, is there, can we put speed bumps here?
Speed tables are a possibility, but they got problems too.
Yeah. Well, even if it was just for like a little while, you know?
They're very expensive.
Are they?
They have to be engineered.
About 20 grand apiece.
Really?
Yeah.
This is a speed table, okay? And you will have noise every time a car or something goes over it.
Like every time somebody hits that grate out in front of my house?
Yeah.
We won't talk about that.
Sorry, you're actually, you're on Route 7.
I'm right next to Kenny. I'm right.
So you're on Cleveland Avenue?
I'm a little, no, no, I'm on the main road.
Okay.
And when the trucks hit that grate, kaboom. But that's, we talked about that many years ago and actually the Select Board came up and stood on my front yard and you could hear it. It's just something that, you know, you have to deal with. It's just the way the grate is.
It goes to 40 right at Kenny's house, right? So then people.
No, just beyond it.
So they're accelerating toward that sign though?
Yeah, yeah.
Saying that, okay, now I can let it out.
Yeah. But, um, since that, to be honest with you, since that light has been not working, that's when the craziness all started.
Yeah.
It was like, you know?
Well, like I said, I'll, I'll get on to them again tomorrow, see what's going on with it.
Now, it's just.
But the part, because I do believe that panel is broken and.
It looks like someone smashed it.
That's kind of the problem.
Something at it because it shattered.
Yeah. It's gonna be, because of the nature of it, it's gonna be an ordeal, I think, getting the right parts for it. So we'll let, I'll push them again and see where we are with it.
Okay.
It's not a standard one.
I didn't realize it came in there.
Yeah.
Does it have a camera on it?
No, cameras aren't enforceable anyway.
That's too bad. We'd make a lot of money, right?
Well, we wouldn't.
You know, but, you know, it's, it's just, you know, I just wanted to, you know, I've been talking, everybody's been talking about the craziness and the speed. And right from Church Street, I mean, Terry Morton down at the bottom of Shop Hill, she's like, they come up over that hill, craziness, um, Gail Moran, my brother Peter, um, you know, me, actually Kenny was out in his yard today mowing and he's like, man, you know, it's just craziness here. And, uh, so something needs to be done about it because these trucks are not gonna stop.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's my thing, you know? And I think the community centers.
So, okay, so that's.
Thank you very much.
You guys have my seat.
You too.
Stay tuned.
I am too.
So as long as there's a discussion about speeding, can I bring something up?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'm on the end of Crossville Road just before you get into, uh, White Creek.
Yeah.
And the traffic on the road, particularly, um, the farm equipment that comes up out of White Creek, I don't recall the farmer, the owner's name, but I believe that they own a lot of the property across the street from me. And so they've got, you know, equipment that's traveling past the house quite often several times a day. And it is hairy at times when they've got tractors, um, that are pulling, um, equipment and coming around some of those corners. It's, they're, they're flying around some of those corners. In addition to that, we see more and more often where large trucks are coming in off of Seven to cross over to get to or head out to Cambridge and so forth. So we've got, you know, large, in some cases even tractor trailers that are coming up over Cross Hill Road. And if you're not familiar with Cross Hill Road, there's a section of it that's not only steep, but it's very narrow. And when you meet a truck on that section of the road, it's, um, it's difficult for both vehicles to get by. I don't know if it would make sense to, um, invent trucks even from coming across Myers Road and Cross Hill Road and first and then to going into, uh, North Bennington over 67 and back out towards Cambridge over 68. Um, I, I think that the, the number of, of fast-moving, large vehicles has got way out of the end and should be, should be a place addressed and looked at.
Okay. Thank you. Farmers use big trucks to harvest their, harvest their forages and that sort of stuff. So if we made it something in trucks, farmers wouldn't be able to.
But that's, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I, I understand that the farm equipment needs to get to their fields and so forth, but they need to be slowed down. Um, you know, somewhere these days, they're just gonna take somebody else. I'm, I'm thinking more the, you know, the tractor trailers and large trucks that are making deliveries, um, you know, R.K. Miles sends over some of their larger trucks. And like I said, there's a section of, of the road that's just really narrow, it's tough to get by. If they're, they're coming up or down there fast, it's, uh, it's hard to get around.
I know recently with the hay, with the issues with the hay being so wet, there was kind of a real flurry of activity. They were trying to get a lot done in a short period of time, so I didn't notice the stuff moving around a little faster than usual, but they had to do with it.
R.K. Miles is delivering material to the house. It's going to be more possible.
But wouldn't some of those trucks be over the weight limit for that road?
There is no weight limit.
Oh, there isn't?
We seem to be having increased problem with truck speeding around 10. And, I mean, we might want to just try to think about why it's going up. There must be a lot of reason.
The roads got a lot better.
The roads are better?
Roads are.
And there's no enforcement. Which brings us back to with, for us anyway, with the new sheriff, we didn't increase our hours like we wanted to last year because we weren't getting our hours fulfilled. So as we look at the budget this coming year, I'd like to go back to what we were talking about last fall and really increasing the hours so that maybe we could have a sheriff here 30-plus hours a week so we could actually start addressing things realistically. Uh, but in the prior like four or five years, we weren't even getting the hours we were contracting for. So that's changed and we have, uh, a new feel for it. So I think it might be time to up the hours because, see, you do need a presence and you do need enforcement and you do need some blue lights going to get people to.
Yeah.
And that costs money and I think it's time we, because I think we can have the resources now that could actually fulfill the contract, we should, we should bump it. So that'll be something for the budget.
And it's unfortunate because I understand that the truckers, they, this is their livelihood. You know, they work and I would hate to see them get a ticket because I know it probably goes on their CBL. But maybe as a town, you know, we should, you know, maybe you as a board, I don't know who the powers to be would be, instead of me calling Pike all the time and saying, you know, you guys are, stop. You know, maybe you guys can say, you need to stop. It's gotta stop before something happens. I, I don't know if you guys have the power to do that, um, because I would hate to see any of these gentlemen get a ticket and then it go on their CBL license and be a blemish. But there's gotta be a fine line, so.
Yeah. And there's a huge variety of hauls out there. You know, Pike is just one cog in the whole thing.
Yeah, there's a whole bunch of trucks.
There's all kinds of people out there driving, so, uh, you know, there, there are ways of, of doing things to get the message out to people to slow down. You drive through Cambridge, you do 20.
I sure do.
Past the school because there's a high probability. If there's not visibility, if you don't see someone out there, you don't realize the potential for getting stopped, then you don't even think about it. So I think it's really, we need to increase the presence so that people know they're out there. You know, there's a town leading into Woodstock that everybody crawls through because they must hire that guy just to be there around the clock, you know? But, I mean, it, you know, we don't have to go overboard, but you have to have a realistic visibility out there to get people to.
Right.
Start thinking about it.
So, so in the 20 years that I've been out here, I've never seen any law enforcement in the area. But I think if we had a sheriff parked somewhere close, that'd be seeing the, um, the farm equipment come flying up out of White Creek, hitting the road and, and maybe I'd be doing 35, 40 miles an hour. This road just is not made for that.
Yeah.
It's not that wide. You know, one of the corners, like I said, it's just gonna be a matter of someday, somebody being just too far to, to the left a little bit and right, there's gonna be a problem. So I think if we could get the sheriff to park us once in a while, it would make a huge difference.
Yep. No, I agree with that.
Okay, well, thank you. You guys have a good evening. Thank you.
Bye-bye. So if, if that goes into the next year's budget, then when do you anticipate you could tell people that there is gonna be more of a.
Well, it would be July of '25, '24, sorry. FY '25, but it's the July of, of '24 when it starts.
We might want to just get that word out.
Yeah. I think, just, just what Rob said, you know, you're not gonna have a car there all the time. But there has to be an idea that, you know, and with seasonality with the farming stuff too, that, you know, if someone's gonna be here. There's mornings on, actually all streets have some characteristic to them where it makes it more likely something will be going on. You just, if you have the manpower, if you have the time, you can start addressing these things. And at 10 hours a week, uh, not much presence.
I got pulled over 30 years ago near my parents' house and to this day, I'm careful in that spot. So it does.
Yeah, yeah. Well, like I said, Cambridge, you pull up there, it could be middle of summer, I'm going 20.
Yeah. I was wondering where he's coming out. Yep.
Uh, next on the agenda is the EDC consultant for the planning grant.
Well, I have a Treasury report first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. So, uh, yeah, she just left me some basic information. Uh, tax receipts are already over 300,000. Uh, the tax bills have been out for weeks now. Uh, we have had a fair number of those returned as undeliverable. So Melanie wants anyone who hasn't received one should contact the Treasurer right away because they haven't mailed. Um, there are issues with the mail, but we have had a number come back as undeliverable. Uh, there is also a backlog processing Homestead declarations on Montpelier. So please check your bill carefully to see you're being billed at the correct rate, uh, but you may need to be patient until they catch up. We've also had three of the four quarterly payments on the state highway aid this year. The legislature moved them up because of all the damage, mostly far the north of here. So we are well ahead on our annual payments already. We have three out of the four of them. Um, and I didn't bring it up, but the reserve accounts are pretty much the same as they were last time. The only one interesting is the, um, Class, well, Class 3 Road Fund, which shows a $211,000 deficit because we're waiting on a $200,000 grant payment from the state. So it's, it looks very dramatic, but it's actually quite dull. So, and the rest of them are, are just the same. There's a few negatives, but it's because of the way we work, we start collecting taxes, they're all due by November, we don't put money into the reserve funds until they're all collected at the end of December. So like paving will show a negative now, but it's really just because we have to pave now and it's made up when we fund it later on. So, uh, that's it, that's all she gave me.
I think she borrowed 100,000, did she pay that back or?
I don't know. I don't want, I know that's the only amount we borrowed. The state aid, which I believe is somewhere around 145,000 for the third payment, that's a big boost to the cash on hand right there. And 300,000 already taken in taxes has pretty much eliminated the need for any more borrowing.
Sure. Okay. Now we can go on to the EDC consulting planning grant.
Okay. The, uh, we were talking about doing a planning grant for the exterior of Coal Hall around the whole property, but, uh, through the EDC, we've been talking to the Benton County Regional Commission, uh, they've made a proposal to, which Martha will present at a future meeting, but a proposal to do, uh, a whole bunch of planning, economic planning for us. Um, discussed with Martha to switch the planning grant to the EDC, uh, because the ARPA money was gonna pay for the EDC stuff and, uh, we were gonna get a planning grant to do the exterior stuff. So I think we'll switch that around, uh, because it looks like because of some circumstances, it'll be less of an expenditure outside to have this planned out. Uh, and we've been offered grant money for other things outside already. So we'll, uh, use the planning grant to engage BCRSC. They will assist in grant writing for us too. And, uh, that would fund the different economic development, uh, projects that the EDC has been asking for. So it's just a procedural thing. At the next meeting, I'll have the, it's a statement from the Select Board that they want to be involved in this. I've started writing part of the grant, but, uh, the final part will be done with, uh, Janet Hurley from BCRSC and we'll work up the cost factors. We have till November 1st, but I'm surprised it's September already, so.
Right.
Time is.
Time is going.
Kind of, kind of moving along here too. So that's more just to bring the board up to date on what we're gonna move there.
We're ready for everybody.
Yeah, switch them around a little bit.
We have Coal Hall improvement contract.
Yeah, and this, and this also, I sent around a few things. The main question here for tonight is the two forms that we can do, construction management or the more traditional bid. The construction management, I sent around the paper.
I sent all the pros and cons.
Yeah, what do they do with it? Oh, yeah. So, you know, the construction management, and actually in this market, it's the only reasonable thing we're gonna get. Yeah, because, um, in, in a low-demand market, you can go put it out to bid and a lot of people will come in with this. And this, the construction management, because when you hire the construction manager, he'll also be the contractor and during the process, he has to give you a guaranteed minimum price. So everything starts to fall in line. He works with the team the whole way through, not like, you know, like when we did the town garage, you started with Morton, then we had the architect, we designed the whole thing, then it went out to bid, the contractor to put it together. In this format, you go out to bid for a construction manager at the beginning. When he's selected, then they work with the committee to design the elevator here, basically is what we're talking about, with the architect. There's guarantees put into it. Um, drawbacks can be if the team doesn't gel together very well. Um, the benefit of Goldstone having the contract for this is we've all worked with them before and we do have good relationships with them, so I would think it'd be fairly. So I would think it'd be fairly smooth and, uh, I can almost think of who the construction managers are gonna be bidding for this. But, uh, I think it's, I think it's the better way to go. I need some kind of decision from the board to approve going with the construction manager because that has to be entered into the famous AIA document B101, which, uh, starts off the process of design. I've sent around a rough draft that barely has anything on it because it gets fleshed out when we decide which direction we're going. For that, the number's staying the same. We're ballparking this at around 750,000, hoping that it won't be that high. The 750 was talking about elevator. We have had very good pushback from the state, or feedback, I should say, that they will be open to putting in a Lula, which will reduce the cost a great deal. I was talking to Jack last Friday and Jack buys from Goldstone. Uh, we really have to move on something because we have an October 30th, I think, is the date for a hearing before this commission that will approve it. So it's really kind of crunch time. So we need to decide on which method we're doing so we can get this contract fleshed out, so we can sign it. Might even have to have a special session to sign a contract to get this going. Because if we miss the date this fall, it's gonna be next spring sometime. And we really wanna move. We really wanna move the stuff.
So I think the best way to do this is to entertain a motion and then we'll have discussion. I really should be discussing a motion.
Sure, I'll move to discuss this work on Coal Hall. Make a motion for talking about the, the construction, for doing, yeah, for hiring the construction manager. That's.
We have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
Motion by Martha, second by Naomi, that we go the route of the construction manager for this project is coming up. How we can discuss. Does anybody have any negative thoughts about it? When they explained it to us, they said that the only other way is you have to have every single thing. And then somebody gives you a price for everything, but as you go along, things change. As the construction manager in his bid and you choose him, uh, in his bid, he actually is gonna tell you what he's gonna make. Yeah, so everybody understands that and that sort of stuff.
I mean, it seems to me like you would end up with David as basically the project manager otherwise and then you wouldn't get anything else.
Yeah, yeah.
And everything would be sort of behind.
Yeah, and this, yeah, and this, um, in the market, as they explain to us right now, a lot of people won't even enter a project if it's not a construction manager. Because they don't want to bid on something. There's so much work out there. They're not gonna spend all the time working up a bid and all this other stuff.
Right down to the last detail.
Yeah, because when, when we got bids for the garage, I mean, these were very specific, very large bids. Well, that's not the way it works anymore. You get the construction manager who works with the architect all the way through to construction design and construction. So, um, it's kind of being driven by the market and uh, it seems to be the quicker and less expensive way. Like I said, one of the big drawbacks, they said, is if the team isn't working together. But we do have that benefit of having work projects with everybody involved in this one, except whoever the construction manager is gonna be. But, uh, that should, that should work out too. Oh, yeah, yeah. It's an open bid. It's an open bid.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carry 500. Next one is leased property.
Across the street, we own a piece of property. Uh, it's been repeatedly leased out on these 10-year leases. Dennis McCarthy used to own the property. It's the parking for the buildings on the corner. The 10-year lease is, is up in next year and I'm really thinking we should sell it. We should just contact the people, Wolf Creek Properties in New Jersey owns it. And, uh, this thing, they pay us like $300 a year for this piece of property over there. And I think we should just notify them, whatever the legal process is, just that we're not renewing the lease. It was for sale. This is its valuation. You know, you have right of first refusal. Just buy the property. So we're out of it. And if they decide they don't want to buy the property, then we'll deal with it that way. Put up parking meters or something. Have them say that way. But, uh, you know, if you look where everybody's parked over there. Yeah. And it actually goes deeper. It goes deeper than you think.
Yeah, it goes.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, it's just one of these things. This lease has probably been going on for decades. And, um, when Dennis owned the property originally, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah. Yeah, what do you, yeah. So I think it's just time to end it and buy the property. It's, uh, more liability to us than anything else, having people use it. But with the board's permission or vote, then I'll start the process and notify them. We can break it with 90 days' notice. And I just want to get a word to them that, you know, it's time to, time to buy it.
I think this better be a motion.
It'd be a motion, put it up. I guess, I guess we have a motion first.
Yeah, make a motion to begin the process of selling, uh, the town property opposite Coal Hall. Currently used as a parking lot.
All right. And we'll make a motion to consider selling the, uh, property across the street from Coal Hall, which is currently used as a parking lot.
There's a second amendment. It's a motion by Mike, second by Naomi. Any discussion?
I guess I, with increased parking here, I guess I'm just thinking of the municipal parking. I know right now we're not using it for that. Just wanna make sure we're not giving up something that in theory we.
Well, the problem is that if, if, if he doesn't buy it, then all his tenants are displaced. So it's better, I think, for the town and everybody for them just to own it and have the liability for it. Yeah, because we close it, they're gonna park here. So.
What's the unexpected? I mean, could somebody buy that and put a house on it?
It's not big enough. It's bigger than you think, but it's not big enough to really do anything with. And it has just been one of these things that's been around. I think it was signed right as I got here, the last one, like 10 years ago. So.
I think the reason it goes deep is there used to be a building there.
It used to be a blacksmith or something back there. Yeah. Yeah. Because that's how it's in the deed, something about a blacksmith.
That's what goes a little bit deeper because it used to be a building. So we have a motion. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500. Okay, request for the board of the public trustees to transfer some money. Thank you for waiting so long.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Yeah, the, uh, the first one, uh, this was to ask the board so that we can start talking to Rob and request from the trustees disbursements. The, uh, a member of the Howard family had left in a bequest about $45,000 to the town with a specific purpose of improving Howard Park. The improvements we're doing at Howard Park right now are gonna cost about $80,000. And what we're doing is improving the drainage so the tennis court stops falling apart. So that the soccer fields don't flood, the parking lot maintains better. And, uh, we have a large grant from the state, which is helping to match this, 25,000. So what we're looking for, what the recreation committee has requested is the $45,000 from, uh, that, that fund.
Would that deplete the fund or is that?
I believe, well, that's one thing I need to talk to Rob about because the bequest itself was, I think, $45,000.
Yeah, currently as of end of trading today, the Howard Park account is running about $47,500. So it'll leave a couple thousand dollars after we distribute the 45,000 request.
Yeah. And the committee, when this is all being discussed, and the family member is, is part of the committee, it was decided that we can't really look to do other serious improvements there unless we solve the water issues. So that, that's why we took this route and we convinced the state also to give us money to work solely on the water issues there. So that, that's where we are in this. And that's why the committee thought this would be a good use of the money that was left by the family. Because these improvements, unlike some temporary things, will keep the park going for decades to come. So that's why we wanted to ask for that money.
So what's the process? We, we make a motion and then you?
I'll write a letter to the trustees based on your motion requesting the funds. Is that correct, Rob? I think that's how we did it last time. Yes. Okay.
So I make a motion to transfer from the Howard Park Fund $45,000 for the drainage from the trustees.
We have a motion by Martha.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500. Thank you.
The next one is a request for 20,000 from the GW Hawkins Fund. A couple of years ago, we had requested about, uh, now I forget, but I think it was like 37,000 for the GW Hawkins to do the, a new transfer station, um, building for the employees there. But the thing spiraled wildly out of control, along with the ramps or the, for tipping things in. So we've come down to a more reasonable 20,000 to get started because we can buy a prefab building that would be larger than the one she had and will move the trailer off. I really want to buy the trailer, but they really don't want to sell it to me. So, uh, you know, who knows why, but they don't. But, uh, this would be ground level, which would take care of a lot of issues. It would have a window so people could walk up. If you look at the end of the road here, you know, under the trestle going into Bennington, and we're basically talking about one of those, that then we can have like Hathaway wire, put in an air conditioner. And, uh, have, I like the, like the little porch thing because then people can come up and pay harder through the window, which would make our outside auditors very happy if we could start running a cash register to keep receipts and things. So I think it's time to move ahead with this. Uh, like I said, when we talked about this last time, the thing was just spiraling out of control and then COVID happened and everything else. We just let the whole thing play for a while, but it's time to get back to it.
I did talk to Greg too, and he felt like, just anecdotally, I guess that, you know, some people who might have been cheating before are still saying, oh, it's a 30 gallon rather than a 30. You know, there's still a little bit of fudging, you know, and if you can get that window closer to the aperture of the.
Well, that's, that's one of the key things too, is that you bring this up much closer so that people are literally walking directly in front of them. Even if they're setting at the window, they don't have to go out, go down the stairs, come around and walk over to the thing. It's literally in front of them. And it doesn't need to be the size it is now because what they're doing is they're accumulating things inside. So, you know, it's like shorten it up. There's plenty of room for two people to be there. Like the one in Sunderland, they only have one person and he barely fits in the thing. So I think, you know, it would be big enough for two people to be in, uh, on those really cold or really rainy days. And the porch just makes it easier for people to come up and exchange with the cash register inside. Which, like I said, our auditors have been honest for a while to start doing that. So I think it'd be easy to get it in, easy to wire it up and, uh, heat it and put air conditioning in it.
Make a motion to, I guess, to develop this, uh, new housing situation for attendees.
Don't call it housing. It'll be a whole nother ballpark.
Okay, transfer from GW Hawkins Fund, a motion to transfer from the GW Hawkins Fund $20,000 to make transfer station improvements.
Yes, like this one.
We have a motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Martha. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500.
Rob, that works for you?
Yeah, it works for me. Just send me a letter and I'll get opposed, taken for, just if you don't transfer.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, it just said have a good evening too.
DPW report is Buck Hill. DPW is all Buck Hill. That's all it is. The, the pavers are on the way. They have to finish it up. So, uh, they're still working on the upper end. They're just about done. I got a very brief thing from Mike today because he's been so busy up there. I think they have a culvert or two left. They actually discovered some culverts that had become so full, they didn't know they were there. So that dates back years. So they've had to put in more culverts than they thought. Um, but.
It's gonna be a big improvement.
It's gonna be a huge improvement. Yeah, it's gonna be a huge improvement. So.
Trees are all.
Trees are gone.
Ditches.
Ditches, yeah. It was a big project. Uh, and now that they're wrapping up down there, they'll be making a town, town mix for lack of a better phrase, different type of pavement than they would use on 7A. So they'll be here. And it has to be ready when they're here. You know, when they're ready to get here, the road has to be ready to be paved. So, there's gonna be spending about the next week, week and a half on that. Uh, the only other thing that I'll bring up on DPW is, uh, we did get a complaint, I got a complaint on the first day of school, that the crosswalk is missing over here, which is interesting because the sheriff has been there for however many years after school. And just because he always stands there to direct in and out of the parking lot, I guess he's been crossing kids. And because he's been there the whole time, the crosswalk has kind of faded away and no one ever mentioned it because he was always there crossing people. So, yeah, valid complaint. Uh, so we're gonna get that painted up as quick as we can. It's, uh, yeah. Yeah, when the person was talking to me, it's like, well, you know what? That's because the sheriff was there every day. And he was crossing kids and it just faded away. And because he was always there, no one actually noticed it fading away. So, yeah.
They have to be put in the state specifications, don't they?
Oh, yeah. Actually, I was wondering, we're gonna put it in, but I was wondering, uh, if, how much of the state specifications that location, mid-block crosswalks are very highly frowned on. But, uh, that's kind of a unique location there. But I think if we do it this time, we're gonna have to look for crossing signs with flashes, you know, not these out here, which I don't like honestly. But the ones that have the real flashes on them. So you push the button, it really catches your attention. Because I think if we're gonna put a mid-block crossing right next to a school, it should have a very visible warning to it. So. Uh, I don't know how much they cost, but we'll get them anyway.
And caution signs up the hill so people can.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you know, it is.
Especially now that the car isn't there. I mean, when you drew by, you were just like, oh, there's.
Yeah. And that's, that's.
And it's all gone now.
He never, he never mentioned it and nobody else ever mentioned it. And he was there for so long.
Right.
It was just, he was the crossing guard and.
Institution.
Yeah, and now it's, he's gone.
Longer. Yes.
Yeah, so we'll get, we'll get right on that.
Does the state paint that or just local crew?
Uh, no, the, well, the state's already been through. If, uh, we had known, they might have painted the crosswalk. They paint all the double yellow lines in town on all our roads. But I don't know if they do crosswalks. Uh, but we can get someone to paint a crosswalk.
I know someone at Bennington tried to kind of make their own crosswalk once and that didn't work.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, it occurred to me, I don't know where this crosswalk came from. I have to assume that it was approved many years ago and it's, it's valid. But, uh, I think if it's gonna go in, we seriously have to look at those signs so that we have real flashes there. Just for safety, because without him there, now you have cars lined up in the street and kids entering a crosswalk. And I've seen cars pass the lineup cars
Right.
to go around the whole thing. Because it's really, the sudden shift from a presence there to no one is, uh, leaving it a little bit unprotected.
Is there gonna be a crossing guard?
It's up to the school to hire crossing guards and.
It hasn't been in the discussion.
And if they hire a crossing guard, yeah. And if they hire a crossing guard, yeah, they hire a crossing guard, it's going to get into, why don't you help with the traffic here, and they can't, crossing guards can't get into helping traffic, you know. I, you know, all I know is the sheriff is gone, and it is going to cause a few problems over there. But we'll look into that as, as quick as we can, it's kind of caught us all off-guard, to be honest about it.
Okay. That's it for DPW?
That's it for the DPW.
Have you heard from the state about the D.C. Core samples on White Creek?
White Creek, no, that's, that's into the lab, we haven't heard, that's MSK, we contracted that, and we haven't heard back from them yet. That's going to be another expensive project. That's going to be a lot of money fixing that road. I can go right onto other business, because I'm kind of on a roll here, so.
Other business?
Okay, so the fire department, Joe sent me a thing, we have a list of things they'd like to purchase this year. Right now, they're going to get a new 1 and 3/4 inch hose, a few new nozzles, four gas meters, and 10 5-gallon buckets of foam. There's two things on here that they just want the board to know about and approve. There's new nozzles for the hoses, four new 1 and 3/4 nozzles for the hand lines, they total $3,044. And telescoping lights for engine three, they're around $3,000 for the two lights, these will replace the scene lights they have now, they have regular bulbs, these are LED, they're much brighter, much more efficient, and don't burn out as fast. So what Joe's asking is just the board's acknowledgement and approval for purchasing, especially the new nozzles for 30, sorry, what did I just say? $3,044, and the LED telescoping lights for engine three for $3,000.
So this is all within their budget?
This is all in their budget. Traditionally, the fire department always asks for the board's approval when they spend over a certain amount.
Okay.
But it is all in their, in their budget, this is all budget items.
If we make them feel better, we'll make a motion.
Okay.
So make a motion to, yeah, $6,000 to give movement to the fire department.
Okay.
Make that motion again?
Why don't we just make it that?
Approve the purchase of, of, yeah, the four.
Requested.
Nozzles, yeah, the requested equipment, let's leave it that way, yeah, okay.
Second.
Second by Naomi, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry 500. Oh.
I've run out of things to say.
Okay, review of action items. I think the biggest thing is, is that we want to get ahold of the sheriff and see if we can, and you're going to, we're going to do some stuff with the possibly police.
Yep, and I'll, I'm going to arrange another speed study for Cleveland Avenue, because the last one, again, didn't show significant speeding, so I'll arrange another speed study for Cleveland Avenue. I will talk to the sheriffs about having some presence on 7A in cold spring, Cross Hill, I always say cold spring, when I'm thinking Cross Hill, I don't remember. The letters for the trustees, and I'll let Joe know about the fire equipment, and I'll look into the Hathaway, to the sign again, but afraid that suffered some damage.
And the, and the lease.
And the lease, yeah, and the lease, yeah, the lease, too, yep.
Those speed studies, is it always like a 24-hour, or can we do like a 3-day?
Ours have all been seven days.
Seven days, okay.
Yeah.
Because I was thinking, if there's something new in the road, people slow down, you have to kind of run it along.
You can't even see this thing, it's about the size of, you know, the, yeah, actually, like on Cleveland, we attached it to the telephone pole about mid-block, you can just like crimp it on, and it just looks like a little box hanging off, you can't even tell what it is.
Because the old ones with the tubes across the road, you know.
Yeah, those are no good, we used to have some that we could, it was like something a little smaller than a laptop, that you just laid in the road and covered it with some hard paper, and it's, it's not, but, and you nail gun it into the road, and it would record for up, up to 14 days, and would tell you the length, length of the vehicles, how fast are we going, direction, time, date, and then you just downloaded this huge recorder it would give you, it was quite, quite a good machine. This isn't that exciting, but, but it does a job.
If you've only got 24 hours and there's tubes on the road, then people are going to.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what I always have, because some of them, there were some studies done where they had the sign showing your speed, and they're saying, well, this is how people, fast people are going, it's like, well, if you flash them a sign, then they're going to, you know, you're not getting an honest speed when you're telling people, you know, so, but we'll do that again, see, see what it comes up to, and hopefully, we'll get some resolution this time, because I, I do think it helps there. But it does look like it was badly damaged, so, and it wasn't cheap.
What happened to the Howard Park sign, by the way?
The Howard Park sign, I'm going to work with, with getting this out into the newspaper, because the rec committee is, is rightfully, you know, upset, and it's kind of depressing to have spent so much time over the last few years getting all this money and all these projects done. And essentially, somebody either kicked it off the post or sledged it off, because it's, it's pushed out, all the screws are still there, I'm sure it was damaged when it came off, it's been reported to, to the sheriffs. But we do want to get the word out, you know, that this is going on, and, you know, we're having trouble up there, and it is not people from somewhere else who are on their four-wheelers destroying the Tillner Trail that we just spent $7,000 redoing. You know, we need a little responsibility from the community in, in addressing some of these things. It's very difficult for us to address them, you can't put up impediments to access to it without endangering some innocent person from getting hurt. You know, trail cameras are a possibility, but an ATV flying by on a trail camera isn't going to give you much other than one of the 4,000 or so ATVs that are located in Bennington County. It's the same with the camera system that's up there, it's, it's not very effective, because, I mean, it was donated system, you can't really tell much about the vehicle, who's like a white pickup truck doing donuts in the parking lot, well, okay, again, it's Bennington County, so how many white pickup trucks are there, so it gets not fine enough to get plates or anything, so that's something we'd like to improve again, but it's more like we need, you know, I'm trying to work something out, so maybe we can get an article in the banner, and they can talk to some members of the rec committee, who can try and explain, you know, the amount of time that goes into this stuff, trying to make a nice park for people to enjoy, and then for some people to take advantage of that. Problem with the park is it's secluded, so, and, you know, if, if someone comes in one end, there's a million ways to get out the other ends, so, yeah, it's a problem, very disappointing.
So we can't talk about it, because it's pretty obvious where it came from, so.
Well, maybe it will be found.
Yeah.
That's what we can hope, right, on turning it, because I suspect that a lot of people don't even realize that the sign was stolen, and, you know, maybe it's in somebody's garage right now.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking that, well.
Very expensive sign.
Yeah, well, and it is, it is.
And it was lovely looking.
And it is a lot of money, it was $1,832 to buy.
Wow.
And it is somewhere, my suspicion is it's, it's long gone from here, like someone took it and headed back to campus, because it's not like a sweet sign someone brings up and puts in their bedroom, it's a big sign, it's 72 by 42, something like that, it's a, it's a big sign, you know, so it's not something you're going to stick in your backpack and walk in the house, it's, you know, it had to have been thrown in the back of a pickup truck and drive away, and someone had to have had some idea of where they wanted to take it to, because it's too big, you know, people used to steal the Potter Montgomery sign all the time, you know, it was like huge, you know, actually, when the state made us make them bigger, it actually helped, because it's too big to steal. You know, when you write out Potter Montgomery, it's, oh, yeah, we've had, there's a few, the hollow signs used to get stolen all the time.
Potter Montgomery sign?
Oh, maybe it was stolen, maybe they could look.
Would it reward, would a little reward be?
Oh, I bet it could look.
Oh, down on Trump, yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, but coming off of.
Not, yeah, the.
No, there's not, no.
Nor is there.
Can we put out a little reward for information, is that?
Uh, that gets dicey, I'd have to look into that, there's different rules, I don't know what the rules in Vermont are, but there are definitely rules on putting out rewards. I think we want, want to put the information out, maybe, like, it's more like educating to a whole variety of things we wish people wouldn't do in our parks.
Right, and how much money it is.
Yeah, and how much money this is costing us.
To have created all of those things, and.
Yeah, it was very disappointing even to me, the Tillner Trail with people dirt biking and ATVing on it, you know, the crew took a lot of time.
Yes.
It was over seven, and that didn't include crew time, it was $7,000 in materials, crew time, rented equipment, and within a couple of weeks, parts would have gotten chewed up by ATVs, it was really, it is disheartening, so.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Yeah, okay, next on the agenda, entertain a motion to go into executive session for legal.
So moves.
Second by Martha.
Second.
Second by Naomi. Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're going to be in executive session.
Is there action?
We'll be in the action.
Except to close the meeting.